Evening and welcome to the December 9th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. A meeting was held at 6:00 PM in the conference room at City Hall for clarification of the agenda. The following is the official agenda of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Discussion and commission actions will be limited to those items on the agenda. Any citizen who wishes to address the commission shall first be recognized by the Chair and shall give his or her name for the record. If a citizen wishes to read documentation of any sort to the commission, he or she shall first seek permission from the Chair. There is a three-minute time limitation for presentations to the commission. We'll start the evening off with Agenda Item 1. And Aislinn, if you would call roll call, please.
Jill Kirkham? Did you do a site visit?
Did you make a site visit?
Oh, thank you very much. I have made a site visit, thank you.
Jack Moore?
My name's Jack Moore and I live in the Old Town District. And I did make a site visit to Agenda Item 4 two weeks ago when it first came up, and I have no conflict of interest. Thank you.
Shin Kieru?
My name's Shin Kieru. I live in the Highland area and I made a site visit to Agenda Item Number 4, and I have no conflict of interest.
Richard Phillips?
My name is Rich Phillips. I live in the Bonneville District. I was able to make a site visit within the last week, and I do have a conflict of interest.
He has to state his conflict.
Rich, could you say-
Yep, yep. Prior to that ground being purchased by McCormick Ranch, it was owned by my in-laws. We are currently in the process of purchasing ground that is adjacent to the McCormick Ranch property.
So the question is, does he have a financial gain?
It sounds like it.
Okay, so he will need to be recused from this agenda item.
So, Rich, we will have you be recused for Agenda Item 4.
Samantha Stoddard?
Yes, Samantha Stoddard. I'm from the Highland area. I did make a site visit, and I do not have anything further to report.
Kaylee White?
My name is Kaylee White. I made a site visit, and I have nothing further to report. Okay. And then on to Agenda Item 2, approval of the minutes. Jack?
I move to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Okay. And Jill, can I second?
I will second that.
Ready for roll?
Uh, yes. Aislinn, if you could take roll.
Moore?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Kirkham?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Ruh?
Yes.
Stoddard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Motion carries. So with that, we will move on to the Agenda Item 3, and we will hear from the applicant first. Or, sorry, Agenda Item. Oh, yes. Sorry, no, Agenda Item 3. And that is to elect the Chair and Vice Chair of the commission. So are there any nominations to be made?
I nominate you to be the Chair.
Okay. And any nominations for Vice Chair? Jill?
I nominate Jack Moore to be the Vice Chair.
Okay. Uh, Aislinn, will you call the vote?
Okay. We'll do each one separately.
Okay.
Do we need a second on these nominations?
Yes, that's-
Okay. So with the nominations, we'll need a second for each one. So we'll open up for Chair first. Is there a second for that nomination? From Rich?
I second.
Okay. And then a second. Well, we'll have Aislinn call the vote for that.
Do not have a minute?
Uh, yes.
We didn't quite hear you there, Rich.
Yes.
Thank you. Kirkham?
Yes.
Ruh?
Yes.
Stoddard?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, motion carries. We'll open it up for Vice Chair. Do we have a second for Jill's nomination of Jack?
I'll second that for Jack.
Okay. Second made by Samantha. And Aislinn, will you call the vote?
Kirkham?
Yes.
Stoddard?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Yes.
Ruh?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
With that motion carrying, we will move on to Agenda Item 4. The project being the townhouses at Trail Creek Ridges PUD. And we will hear from the applicant first.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Chairman, Commission members. My name is Brady Smith with Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying here tonight, representing the applicant on this project. Some of you may remember back several years ago that the Holy Spirit Catholic Church did some major improvements over on the West Bench, just north of the Trail Creek Estates subdivision. That's where this project is located, on the old property that was previously owned by the church. They were able to build what is now referred to as Gathie Road, and extended it up and developed a large pad site, I guess is the best way to describe it. And the project before you tonight is basically further developing out that previous pad site that was originally developed by the church. Currently, just to give you a little background, we've got several different projects kind of going up there on the West Bench, and you've probably seen a couple of them already with regards to, you know, proximity and also somewhat, you know, joined together. There was the ridges at Trail Creek that actually has this lot defined within its boundaries, and we are going to be further, you know, subdividing this, you know, pending any outcomes that may come from this PUD. So, you know, with that, I just wanted to kind of give you a general background of why we're here and how we got here. But within this project, we're proposing 164 townhouse units, surrounded by, you know, some open space, some common areas, walking trails, a community center, several things of that nature that kind of make this a desirable place to live. We are asking that some of the PUD conditions that are normally contained within the code be waived. Those are listed in the staff report, and I want to kind of go over them a little bit because there's conditions, but then there's also our part of it, which is the waiver portion of that. And as you can see in the site plan, this configuration is a little bit different than what you may have seen in the past on other projects in that each building will actually be its own lot. And that is by design. That is what the development group would like to do. And so each owner of these, although they are clustered, each owner will essentially own their building walls. But beyond that, the HOA will actually come in and take care of the landscaping, the snow removal, anything like that. You know, if there's, you know, repairs that need to be done within the proximity of those units, the HOA will take care of that. And so there is a little bit of a conflict that happens when that came about because traditionally, we look to try to meet, you know, setbacks within the lots themselves. And so this is just a little bit different in the terms that we actually have an overall boundary that we're trying to stay within. But we are, you know, trying to keep these, you know, clustered townhomes together in a fashion that, you know, is kind of suitable for the desired layout that we have. So one of the waivers that we're asking for is that the, get a requirement to waive the setback requirement, meaning individually per lot. And we do recognize it and are more than willing to adhere to the outer perimeter setbacks of the boundary, to be no closer than 10 feet to any building corner. But within that, once we meet that outer external setback, we would like to just let the internal lots kind of govern themselves. So that would be the first waiver request. And then we also are asking that we, instead of having, the code, the way that it's explained to me, at least by planning, is that our buildings themselves, if they are going to be their own lots, need to encompass the entire building. And ours, again, is a little different in that the overhangs and some of the window awnings and things like that do protrude out into what is going to be common space. And so what we've agreed to do with the city direction and their help kind of pointing in that direction is to provide a two-foot easement around the perimeter of each building cluster to provide the access and maintenance to the homeowners association for that maintenance that is required there. And so, you know, those are kind of the two big parts that we're trying to, you know, propose that are a little bit different than what maybe a typical PUD that you may have seen in the past is. Other than that, we feel like this meets the code. It's meeting the requirements within the zone. We have adequate parking to serve all the units. In fact, we have, you know, almost 90, 80 or 90 stalls more than what we would be required by the code. And so I just kind of wanted to point that out as well. The lot size requirement is 3,650 square feet. And the way that we got to that, I think Carl did a really excellent job of kind of analyzing that in the staff report as far as the overall breakdown of how that comes to be. But because of the clustering and the way that we have it, we basically took the entire, you know, area that we are within and then divided it by our units. And when you do that, we are actually exceeding the minimum lot size by around 400 square feet per unit. So as far as the conditions go, one of the big ones that stood out to us and the development group when we were going through them was the secondary access. And I do want to spend a minute kind of talking about that because the rest of the comments and conditions, we really don't see an issue with. But I did want to point out that a decision has been made to provide fire sprinkling within the buildings themselves, which then would ease the pressure on us to need to do a secondary access at this time. Ultimately, in the end, this is a phased development, and by the time the phases are completed and, you know, market driving that, of course, but assuming the market holds and things stay strong, you know, those secondary access roads will likely be installed anyway. But for the nature of this being the first phase, you know, that is a requirement that we are willing to do. And so I did want to make note that there is a kind of some options provided within that recommendation. And so we want to make sure that you're aware that we are willing and able to do the fire sprinkling within the buildings to, you know, avert having to be required to do that secondary access. And so with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have, but we do feel that this meets the requirements set forth in the code. We do ask that you consider those waivers that we've requested. I believe if you look at the project in its entirety, it does make sense. And I think this will be a nice, attractive project that will draw a lot of interest for people moving into the area. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Do we have any questions for the applicant? If you have a question, please raise your hand so I can call on you. Shin?
So I'm wondering if the city staff have shared the comments from the neighboring neighbors to the developer or the applicant?
I would assume the city involvement would be shared during the city presentation, the staff presentation.
Okay, then I can reserve my questions after that, or?
The public comment is included in the agenda packet, which was provided to the applicant.
Okay. So the question I have is that, can I hear from the applicant how they're responding to their response to their, I guess, the responses from the owners of the neighboring lots?
Is there a specific question in terms of? There have been a few issues brought to our attention, I guess. You want me to go through each letter per se, or?
Um, Brady, can we have you turn on your camera by chance?
You bet.
Thank you.
Sure, if you could do that, that'll be very helpful.
So one of the, one of the concerns, I know, again, kind of going back to the secondary access, which I think was one of the biggest voices of concern that we heard, was, you know, due to the fact that there is a neighbor to the south of us, I believe, that was concerned that that may never, you know, get built, or they might be kind of landlocked, or I don't know all of the different reasons necessarily. But what I can tell you is that, you know, the same ownership group that is, you know, driving this project is also driving the Trail Creek subdivision. And they are going to be the only reason that Magellan gets connected, if it happens. And so the fact that they are up there, you know, day in and day out, trying to make projects happen, to me, is the evidence that I think is clear to me that that intention of getting that secondary access through at some point will happen. Timing is always a concern, and we certainly don't have a crystal ball. But what I can tell you is the fact that every phase that they're trying to get developed is one step closer to getting that connection made. There are some challenges that have came along the way, one of which is we do not have control of some of the land that it would take to get that access fully connected at this point. And so, you know, there's certain decisions, certain things that we can't, you know, make decisions upon because we don't have control of the land. So, you know, I can assure you that from our side of things that, you know, our client is very motivated to do as much as they can within reason to see that second access come to fruition. But it definitely is going to take some time. And, you know, as phases develop, unless the city or someone else is willing to kind of step up to the plate and kind of help that effort out, it's going to have to fall in line with the normal procedures that development drives. So I know that was a big one. The, let me get back through these other ones and see if I can, you know, kind of address those as well. Because I'm not exactly sure who all-
There was another concern with regard to the stub. Could you also-
Yeah, so, so there is another concern. I was just trying to turn to it about a secondary stub or a stub to the property to what would be south, directly south of this project that's before you tonight. And like I was telling you earlier in the kind of setup for the project, when the owners of McCormick Ranch bought the property from the church, the improvements, although they were installed, were never accepted by the city of Pocatello. And so those improvements, you know, both above ground, on the surface roadway, curb and gutter, sidewalk, you know, water, sewer, stormwater, although it was installed, it was never, it was never accepted or approved or even defined in a final state by a plat. And so for all intents and purposes, they bought developed land, but it was never, you know, formally dedicated to anybody at the city. And so when they went up and started looking at their plans for the property that they were purchasing, that decision was made due to a lot of concerns about safety and how that traffic that's going to be added coming out of this multifamily area, feeding into the, basically the start of that Gathie Road, starting to fall down below to the road below, the decision was made to eliminate that existing access that existed. The utility stubs remain in place, and they will be encompassed with a utility easement that the city can then still manage and maintain those stubs. The secondary access has been proposed along what will be future developed land to the west, directly west of the parcel that kind of is in question or has the concern about that stub. And so since the time it was originally brought up in the kind of initial stages of everything, I know for a fact that the ownership group on our side has made a lot of attempts to, you know, get with the adjacent landowners, to show them the idea of where a potential access could make sense for them. But again, going back to my point about not knowing their desires for their land, we're not going to take the time to lay out their land. If they were to join in and ask us to do a joint venture or something, then that's a little different. But not knowing what their plan is for their piece, it makes it a little hard to give an exact location to where that access is going to be. But I can tell you that our side of things is very flexible along their western boundary as to where that could go. We can, generally speaking, slide that north or south to try to be a good neighbor if it makes sense. But what we would ask is that that communication be both ways. We're, we can only go so far as to offer it. Whether it's accepted is another story. And so, you know, with that said, just because we eliminated an access has no bearing on whether we plan to add another one. We do. I can share with you that that is their intention to provide that in every sense of the word. So I know that that has been a big sticking point to this point. But I just want to remind you that what you have before you tonight does not really have any bearing on that particular item. That will probably come up at different stages, and it did come up on the ridges. But technically speaking, this is a separate piece of property that really is not related to that piece, but it's fair to share. I don't have any issue sharing that because we're not trying to hide anything. We're trying to be as transparent as we can be. But I can share with you that our side of things are open and willing to talk about that item and that location if they can help us determine where they think it works for them on that west boundary. And then, of course, if they want to come in and be an active partner in helping that advance faster, then that could be something that could be discussed as well. But as it stays right now, our side of things can only go as fast as we can get things approved and market dictates. And so, and to do it within the land that we own. So I don't know if that answers your question, Commission member. Shin, I'm not sure how to say your last name, but if not, you know-
I just go by the shoe, actually. So I guess just one final comment. Thank you for your explanation. I really appreciate it. So with regards to, there was this comment that asphalt and concrete was, I guess, broken apart. Was this, I mean, could you explain some of that, or is that irrelevant?
Sure. But no. I would not say it's irrelevant. It may be irrelevant to the item before us tonight, but in a general sense, and because it's going to be a hot issue, I'm happy to get it on the record in any format that we can. Again, yes, there was some asphalt removed and some curb and gutter removed that was in existing state when the land was purchased. But again, to me, that was no different than a vacant shed that fully existed. It's a piece of improvement that they purchased that was not controlled by anyone but themselves. And so to say that that was a city access or there was promises made, we've heard a lot of different backgrounds on to how that was, you know, interpreted by the neighbor. But in reality, that improvement, as it existed, was, you know, within our client's land rights to do what they did. And so, again, I just want to make it clear. We're not saying that that access won't be granted in another location because they're more than willing to work out a location to, you know, match that one that was removed. But for safety factors and for a lot of other reasons that, you know, are important to them, they did not want that access to be present at that location.
Thank you for your explanation. So for just clarifications, what you're saying, your applicant is willing to work with the adjacent neighbor on goodwill terms to ensure that there is connectivity in the future?
Absolutely. And like I said, if they could do their part and help us, that would be greatly appreciated as well.
Thank you for your explanation. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for the applicant?
For clarification, please. If the neighbor is not willing to help, is there another option for a secondary access? Or is the secondary access dependent upon the neighbor?
Well, let me back up a second. So with regards to this particular project that's here tonight, you know, by the nature of us doing the secondary, or excuse me, the fire sprinkling in the building, the secondary access requirement is, and Carl can elaborate on this if I don't get all the terms exactly right. But my understanding is by us being willing and able to put in the fire sprinkling to the buildings as proposed, that secondary access will not be required at this time. That being said, in the grand scheme of things, and back to the interconnectivity of the whole entire West Bench, I do not believe that the landowner in question right now with this access concern is going to hinder that cross-secondary access to happen in the future, long-term. Because the way that we've had our concept maps drawn up and long-term planning to this point has not had their land involved in that. And so it wasn't needed to make it happen. But that, there have been other parts of that West Bench where that concept map has been drawn up, that there are other property owners that are involved that we do not have control of at this time. And so there's a lot of logistics that would need to be worked out that way as well. But to the neighbor directly south of us, no. The secondary access does not go through their property as currently shown in any of our concepts.
Thank you.
And if I may, Brady, I have one question for you. And regarding the letter from Fish and Game that was received, the applicant stamps on, regarding that situation.
Yeah, give me just a second so I can find it here, please.
Brady, that letter is not in the agenda packet.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
It had been sent to you via email. If it was not, we can send it over to you.
Okay. Well, I actually do have- Well, I actually do have, uh, my clients with me here tonight. So maybe we could discuss that. And, and if they're able to provide a response, I'll allow them. Or if you can allow them to do that, that would be fine. They're here. So can you elaborate on what that says? And then I can let them answer that.
Let's come back to this.
Brady, or Brady, I just sent it. So Aislinn just sent it to you, Brady.
Okay, give me one second here. So. Oh, I lost my, here.
Should I have you over to present?
Whatever works, Mr. Brady. I would be happy to.
Brady, for the sake of time, would you like staff to do their presentation? And see if they have any questions for staff and then we can come back to this.
Yeah, that would be fine. And while you're doing that, I will just listen and then I'll try to get some feedback for you.
Okay, thank you. So if we could hear from city staff, Carl, regarding agenda item four, please.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Vice Chair and members of the commission. My name is Carl Anderson, Senior Planner with the City of Pocatello Planning and Development Services Department. You have before you for consideration a proposed planning and development to facilitate the development of the ridges at Trail Creek Townhouses, submitted by Brian Ball of McCormick Ranch LLC. The engineer listed on the application is Rocky Mountain Engineering Surveying. This property is generally located west of North Hill Boulevard and, and north of North Gaethje Road Extension. The proposed subdivision is Zoned Residential Commercial Professional. The subject PUD planning development was, will be followed by a preliminary, preliminary and final plat at a later date, pending approval of the planning and development. The applicant is proposing to develop the property into 164 zero lot line townhome lots and common space to serve the property. The common area will provide for additional parking, open space, stormwater retention, a clubhouse and a walking path. It's a project we're not subdivided into separate lots, specifically these zero lot line townhomes and located on the one parcel of land, then the project would meet the minimum lot size requirement outright and a PUD would not be required. The RCP zoning district requires a minimum lot size of 3,630 square feet per townhome dwelling. The applicant is proposing to utilize lot size averaging for this development. Past practice of lot size averaging for a planning development has indicated that lot size averaging may include the common area of the project into a lot size average calculation. As previously stated, the minimum lot size required is 3,630 square feet for townhome dwelling unit. The total area incorporated in the proposed PUD is 15.23 acres or 663,418 square feet, more or less. The applicant is proposing a total of 164 townhome dwellings. Therefore, the minimum lot size required for the development as a whole is 595,320 square feet. When taking the total lots of the subdivision, including all common area, the minimum lot size is 4,045 square feet. The required number of parking spaces for the proposed development is 328 parking spaces and the applicant is providing 413 spaces in total. The applicant has requested two waivers as part of the planning and development application as discussed in the applicant's presentation. These requests include a waiver to the requirement that all portions of the PUD be retained on its individual lot and a request to waive the minimum setback requirements of the RCP slash RH zoning district. Both requests are discussed under the staff analysis contained in section 17.01.140 C1 of table one in your, in the staff report. A traffic impact study has been submitted with this request and has been reviewed by the engineering department. Merrill Quell is present and he can discuss this further should the commission have any questions. Is staff's understanding that this phase of the development does not trigger any traffic mitigations at this time? The conditions are listed on page one of the staff report. However, I'd like to highlight a few conditions. One, uh, or condition number three, the parking area shall be dedicated as common area and at no point may any fencing or other obstruction be placed within the parking area and access area so as to prevent fire access and turnaround. The applicant shall provide a two-foot easement line around the footprint of each building cluster to provide for awnings, eaves, overhangs and landscaping to extend in the shared common area. This should be maintained by the homeowners association. This easement shall be shown on the preliminary and final plat for, for each phase of the development. A minimum of a 10-foot setback shall be provided from all structures in the perimeter of the project area, meaning the minimum rear setback of the RCP zoning district. So around the boundaries of the project area, a minimum of 10 feet shall be remained, again, which is the minimum setback requirement if each individual lot line is present. All proposed amenities shall be complete with each phase of the, uh, phases as proposed. The proposed clubhouse shall be built in a similar style to the townhomes as proposed, uh, where the packet did not include the elevations of the town. We want to ensure that we're maintaining the design characteristics of the overall development. And again, these amenities include the clubhouse, the paved pedestrian way or the pedestrian pathway and the other amenities proposed. In order to address the requirement of fire code that when more than 30 units are constructed, this is condition nine, a secondary emergency access shall be provided. All requirements of the public works memorandum shall be adhered to. Or as the alternate, or as an alternative to this, uh, to meet the fire code requirement, all units shall have fire sprinkling as permitted by the international fire code. This has been reviewed by our fire department and is acceptable. So this means that, you know, if secondary, that secondary access road is not provided, that all units access off Gaethje, whether in this phase or another phase would require, be required to have fire sprinkling. As understood in our conversations with the fire department. So finally, staff recommends that a condition be added that the applicant shall submit a plan meeting all applicable requirements of Pocatello MUS code 17.04.170 sensitive land standards to be included with the preliminary plat application. This is to address both our comprehensive plan natural features overlay map, which designates the area as summer range and the, uh, letter we received from Idaho Fishing Game on December 4th. So, uh, again, this condition stating that we need, staff is requiring a plan be submitted with the preliminary plat application, meeting all requirements of SEC 17.04170. All noticing requirements for the application have been met. Uh, we have received four written public comments which have been included in the agenda packet. Additional, additionally written comment was received by Fish and Game. And in consideration of the application and proposed development, staff concludes that the planning and development request is compliant with Pocatello MUS code 17.02140, provided that all recommended conditions are met. Should the commission recommend approval of the subject application, staff suggests that the recommended conditions be included. This does conclude my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have. Merrill Quell, our public works engineer is also present to answer any questions that the commission may have. And one thing I would like to note, as discussed by applicant in their presentation, uh, the ridges, townhouses, townhomes preliminary plat was heard by the commission. I believe it was August 26th. Um, that is currently scheduled, the final plat is scheduled before the city council on December 17th, um, which does, um, discuss the, uh, the stub road provided by the applicant. One point of clarification on that, um, this, the stub road that was discussed was shown on the Holy Spirit Catholic Community Church site as far to the plan. Um, and in reviewing those applications, not seeing any further discussion on that road being required. And additionally, as the applicant mentioned, those subdivisions were not recorded. Um, and we do have expirations for our subdivision requirements. This concludes my report and I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Thank you. Carl, do we have any questions for Carl? Jack?
It was stated here that this would be encourage attractive infill development. How exactly is this infill?
Can you reference me to Pedro?
Your mic, your mic isn't on, Jack?
It was from the narrative page, uh, just above the narrative that the applicant gave.
I would defer to the applicant to address that.
All right. And, uh, I did have another question. In future developments, what exactly is a project? Because if he builds 36 more houses or units on that road, does he have to have a secondary road period? According to the fire department statement, it said that.
I, I did, Commissioner Moore, I did not catch the last part of your question.
Oh, uh, according to the fired, the letter from the fire department, it stated that any project that has 200 units, even though it has the sprinklers, has to have a secondary road. So what exactly constitutes a project?
Could you please direct me to, uh, where?
Page two with the, uh, circle map of the letter from the fire chief.
So it's an email from?
Yes. So thank you. So this is, um, the exhibit submitted for site plan. So the applicant, this project area went to site plan on September 6th of 2019. What you see there, um, all the way through the last page that begins with the top word engineering, that is the packet that was, uh, the summary of the site plan meeting put together by staff on September 6th of 2019. So fire department, um, when I review this. So this is, um, a, something that I will need to follow up with our fire department with further. This again is a letter that was submitted or the summary of the fire department's requirement at site plan from 2006. And I do see the exception that you're referring to in here and that will require more clarification for future projects. I cannot define how, um, the international fire code defines projects for you at this time. I'd be happy to do more research into that. So, um, based on the way I'm reading this off the cuff, um, exception here, um, looks like it would cap that at 200 units off of Gaethje. Um, in our conversations with our fire departments, they did not elaborate as far as how many, uh, units, uh, what they would be kept at. So that is, um, that warrants further clarification, certainly. So whether that's 200 or if they can sprinkle all moving forward or not, but we will need to, uh, work with our fire department to determine that further.
And, uh, Commissioner Moore, I also would like to just add that the PUD that's before you tonight does kind of show the grand, uh, project, I guess, if you will. You will be seeing subsequent applications with smaller portions of that broken out. So for instance, when the pre-plat comes in for division one, it, it obviously will not be for the full 164 units. It'll just be a portion. And so to answer your question about the project, the way that we visualize this project as a whole, that's before you denied is 164 units total, which would be under the 200 unit requirement.
Uh, any further questions for any of the staff? Okay, seeing no hands raised, uh, we will move on. Brady, do you have, uh, anything to add to my question from earlier?
Yes, so there is a little bit of a, I wouldn't say disagreement, but I believe that we feel like that, that winter range or that, that those points brought up by the fishing game start a little bit more to the west from where we are at. But with that said, our group is willing to get with the fishing game and work out any kind of logistics that we need to, to ensure that their concerns are addressed.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. If there is nothing further, uh, as far as questions for the staff or the applicant, I'm going to open the meeting up for, um, public hearing. Explanation of the hearing procedure. There will be, when you come to the podium, please remember to address the commission rather than the audience. Each person wanting to speak will be limited to three minutes and will be asked to stop when time runs out. Please keep questions and comments pertinent to the application. Please do not duplicate questions, concerns or comments as covered in prior previous public comment. As this is a public hearing, there should be no questions, comments or applause from the audience. If this meeting pertaining to this agenda item goes longer than 8:00 PM, the commission may take a scheduled five to 10-minute break. A 10-minute limit, or sorry, a three-minute, um, limit for public testimony. Please present your name and whether or not, um, and how you stand with the application. Questions and comments should be addressed to the commission. Commission members must make their decision regarding the application on facts already in record and information presented at the public hearing. Conflicts of interest, site visits and expertise contacts by commission members will be acknowledged. Protocol requires that commission members and audience be recognized by the commission chair prior to speaking.
The clock's ready.
Okay, um, so Aislinn will have the clock here. Um, it will count down from three minutes. And so with that, we will have testimony by those supporting the application. Um, and due to COVID-19 restrictions, we will have, um, individuals come in one by one to the meeting here, the conference meeting and the conference room to state their stances.
Go ahead and start.
Yes.
Okay, Mike. Have to keep it up. My name's Mike Ennis and I have the land south of, um, this development of McCormick Ranch. Matter of fact, all my land is situated between their two developments. And I own the land that's in question as far as the easement. As far as marking on the, the clipboard outside, I put against, but, uh, I wanted to quantify that. As far as the PUD, I have no concerns over that. But what was included in the packet was a memo from, um, Merrill Quail to, uh, Carl Anderson. And it addressed the, um, the requirements for a permanent secondary access road and then be constructed in accordance with the, uh, the city's, uh, road standards. So, and it, so after reading that, and then in the packet also was a letter from Brian Ball and Rod Furness with their Trail Creek letterhead. And in the first paragraph, it states that McCormick Ranch is either purchased or optioned the land to comply with this mutual desired permanent secondary access. So it seemed like their letter was addressing Merrill's memo. And I, and I sent a letter to the commission and to the And I, and I sent a letter to the commission and to the planning and zoning stating that there is no agreed upon easement with me or nothing's been purchased, there's no option. And we've tried to address it in the past. We're in litigation right now. I don't see anything being resolved until we're out of litigation. But my land runs the full length of both projects. So for them to put an easement in, they'd have to come to me. And we've tried and maybe we could work something out in the future, but I can't even begin to address that. So I just want to make that clear. As far as the PUD, that's, that's something separate. But because this was included in the packet, I felt inclined to address it and make it very clear that there is no agreement for an easement across my land. Nothing's been purchased or optioned. Any questions?
Looks like we have one question. Jack?
Mr. Ennis, I was wondering, how far back does your land go to your BLM land?
All the way. The BLM land behind, directly behind us, it used to be called Mashaw Creek land. And then behind that's BLM. I don't, I don't think I have any BLM touching mine. I think the old Mashaw Creek acreage is what separates even their land from BLM.
Thank you.
Okay, any, any other questions?
None.
All right, thank you.
Hello. If you'll come forward to the mic and state your name and your stance on the, on the agenda item in front of us.
I can't hear you.
If you'll come forward and state your name and then just your stance on the agenda item.
Okay, my name, my name is Linda Papelka. And we own the 38 acres adjacent to the ridges that Trail Creek development. And we also own a, an easement that travels across McCormick Ranch's land. It goes all the way to the BLM. And I do want to clarify, we haven't talked to McCormick Ranch since 2018. We had an agreement with them, a memorandum of understanding to work together to, to create the road. We all want the road up there. We want that secondary access that will benefit our neighborhood, our community, the West Bench. It'll benefit Brian Ball and his development. So we've always been in agreement with that. However, we have not heard from him. And we were blindsided when the plat for the ridges at Trail Creek removed a stub, a 90-foot stub that went to our property boundary for future use. We had been using that prior to McCormick Ranch's buying the church land. So we had used that prior to access our fences and cut down brush for fire control and that kind of stuff. So the last time we talked to them was in 2018. We did have a few heated email exchanges when we found out about the stub being removed because they never talked to us about it. We just found out about it accidentally. So we're not sure how communication is going to work. I do think it's quite important to understand that they have not reached out to us since 2018. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of homes that are going in up there. There's 164 units in the PUD, 114 homes in Trail Creek. The vistas, Trail Creek vistas, Division 1 has several fourplexes. That's a tremendous amount of traffic in this area. And it's going to be critical for safety to have that secondary road access to connect the two developments. I do know that we're not the only people that are willing to work with them. All three of the landowners that are between Trail Creek, I'm one of three between Trail Creek and the ridges at Trail Creek, all of us are willing to work with him. And, but he hasn't communicated with us about it. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
Did you have any, did anybody have questions?
Any questions from the commission? No questions. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Ralph Hekard, and I am a co-owner of a property with Linda that is immediately adjacent to the south. That was part of the stub which has been removed. And I totally agree with Mike Ennis in terms of the letter or letter memorandum, whatever it is, 1110-2020 that McCormick Ranch submitted stating that they have either purchased or optioned the land to comply with a mutually desired permanent secondary access. I sent a letter for the November 19th meeting that argues otherwise. And I think tonight you heard earlier Brady Smith acknowledged that they don't have control. So I don't know what's different from 1110 to 1209 in which their engineer, Mr. Brady Smith, stated that they do not have control for the secondary access road. The second issue, Mr. Smith stated that the purchasers of the church ground, in essence, inherited the improvements the church had and that improvements had never been approved or involved with the city. And that's not accurate. There's engineering plans for that road that include the stub that were approved with a stamp, City of Pocatello dated and timed. And I would be happy to forward those documents to you from prior to the construction of the road with its stub. So when he unequivocally stated the city had nothing to do with it, that's not exactly true. Nothing means nothing. But if you have stamped engineering plans that are approved by the city, that's city involvement. I'm not an attorney. I don't know this business about. It was never platted is the answer I got. But somebody somewhere in the city approved that road, stamped, signed, sealed, and delivered. And I will be happy to forward that to Carl. If you haven't seen those documents from prior to when the road was built, I will get them for you. When they did that and when we saw those, for us, it was a given that it was approved by the city. As I state, I'm not an attorney. I don't know when a final plating is versus a preliminary. But for all intents and purposes, the engineering of that road had been previously approved by the city from my viewpoint. And we came to rely upon that in a way that now is gone. That stub has been torn out, history. But again, Brady stated the city had nothing to do with that road, not true.
Thank you.
And thank you for your time. And microphone? If anyone has any questions, I'm more than happy to answer.
There are no questions.
None?
None.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I do believe we've received testimony of those supporting the application, those uncommitted and those opposed. If I am incorrect in those statements, I would entertain those testimonies to come forward. Okay, I'm not seeing any more testimony. Rebuttal by the applicant?
Yes, thank you. So I just want to clarify one thing before I try to address the other comments that were brought forth by the, those that, that shared their opposition. The project today that is before you is second, it is not related to the concerns that are being brought forth. I do recognize Mr. Ennis's, you know, reasoning for wanting to bring it up because it wasn't a packet. We're, we're fine with that. But I just want to clarify that, just to make sure that we aren't getting sidetracked one way or the other, that this particular project before you tonight is not connected to this, who owns the rights, the easements, all this other stuff to get this secondary access from Magellan over to Gathie Road. So with that, I just want to continue. So in reference to, you know, Mike's comment about, Mr. Ennis's comment about the, the ownership, that is why I was clear upfront that we do have some challenges before us, that we don't have control of the land to get everything put in the way that we would like. But we're trying our best to do what we can with the land that we do have control of to extend roads to get us closer to that point. The reasoning behind the letters, I'm not the one to probably ask on that. If you do have further questions and you need an exact answer for the letter that I did not prepare, you know, my clients are here to answer that if you need. But that I'm sure will be talked over at other stages as these other projects on the West Bench move forward. With regards to Linda Papelka and Ralph, I'll kind of try to keep them in the same rebuttal because of their involvement is, is the same piece. I, I first and foremost want to say that I never stated that the city had no involvement. What I said, Ralph, was that we did not have an approved plat that defined right of ways that, that dedicated lots and right of ways to the city. That is true. There has nothing ever been dedicated to the city. He may be correct. I have not seen the approved plans, but traditionally and generally speaking, when we go to construction on our projects, we do have what we call city-approved construction drawings. Those approved drawings basically serve as a, a way for us to go and build the improvements that are shown in those plans. So I'm not going to disagree with him that those do exist. But there is a lot more that happens from the time that those improvements get installed to when they formally get accepted by the city and actually accepted by the city. So he is not an attorney. I do agree with that. And he doesn't really fully understand the subdivision process. So if he did know that, he would know that there's more that happens beyond the construction that actually formally takes that to the level of final and accepted by the city. The fact that they are using that property as an access or whatever they thought they were using that for, for fences and otherwise, they'd have to be trespassing because the gate is locked at the Foothill Drive entrance. And that has been basically gated off since the time the church exited. So I don't want to get argumentative and go back and forth, but the reality is that property has been gated and closed off for years. And if they've been using it at their own discretion, then that's on them. I, nobody's up there trying to be a hall monitor. But I will say that, you know, Ralph would be very, you know, well-served if he went and then actually looked at how the subdivision process plays out in its entirety, not just pieces and parts. And so that would be my response to their conditions. And Carl may be able to elaborate further. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing. And declare the public hearing closed. Commission, how would you like to proceed? We can proceed with further discussion. We can enter, we can entertain a motion. Is there any discussion? If there is, please raise your hand so I can follow you. Shin?
I would like to hear the city staff's position on this or kind of their insight on the, on the matter, if possible.
Well, could you be more specific?
Yeah, it seems like there's a bit of concern both raised by those who are showing up in the public hearings today. And there is also, I guess, I'm wondering to what extent, like, I mean, there was kind of back and forth with regards to kind of the public asking questions with regards to approval. I know, I know the applicant says that is, to a certain degree, shouldn't stop the process. I'm just wondering, you know, with, can I just get a little more clarification about the stub? Because I think the stub is, and it being torn up is one of the main contentious issues.
So if I may interject, Carl, is that okay? So the stub was related to a secondary access point, which is now being eliminated due to a sprinkling of the building, is that correct? For this, for this specific agenda item? Not quite, okay.
So the stub that, I'm going to break this down to separate topics. The stub currently provides access, provided access or was intended to provide access to the property to the south. The secondary access is a requirement of our fire code. This, when we're talking secondary access, we're saying that in addition to Gathie Drive, there needs to be a second road providing secondary access for bringing requirements to fire code, which is when we get to sprinkling. The stub that is providing access to the property to the south, which is a property owned, owned by Ralph Hekard and Linda Papelka, provided access to their property, specifically the portion of their property that's on, up on the bench. While this, the ridges townhomes was subject to preliminary plat, which the commission reviewed on the 26th, and concerns were addressed regarding that secondary, that access, that stub road. Part of our requirement for preliminary plat is that we provide for a connected transportation system in which we added decondition that they work with the adjacent property owners and city staff to verify that that property still has access. The applicant has provided some preliminary concepts for that. And staff has reviewed that and has addressed some of that with conditions, which is a separate application matter for a final plat. So that access is being considered. The secondary access for the, for the fire codes purposes, so on that second category option, has been addressed alternatively by providing fire sprinkling. And we will need to clarify, as stated earlier in staff's presentation, Q and A, with fire department is whether or not that is capped at 200 units or not, based on comment received at site plan from 2019. And, you know, we will clear that up with our fire department. There's, I had another thought, and it escapes me. Okay, so the, there seems to be some disagreements regarding whether or not this was a subject of a preliminary, previous subdivision or not. This was, the road, Gathie Drive, and portions of this land was subject to a previous subdivision application based on the Holy Spirit Catholic Church subdivision, I believe, 2013. And I believe 2011, I'm going off memory, so please take that through, that is. And I believe they went through preliminary and final plat. Now that, it is correct that after final plat approval, all those construction drawings, all the requirements of that process, all the corrections need to be done. And then the plat may be recorded once accepted by the city. I am unsure of at what point in the process the project stopped, but the plat was never recorded. Under our current code, which was a different subdivision code than at that time, but under our current code, subdivisions after final plat approval expire after two subdivisions after final plot approval expire after two years, meaning that if anyone comes in for a subdivision, they are subject to our current standards, and it is starting over. I don't know if that provides any clarity.
Yeah, so that actually provides a lot of clarification. So it was not a question about the secondary road, but really about the stub and its torn up and the grievances that were raised by the public that we want to address as well. Thank you.
And if I, if I may, and I'm sure there, you know, there was public comments in your agenda packet, the who, the individual is not here tonight, who did contact me, let me know he wouldn't be able to attend. But that is in your agenda packet as well that does address some other issues. Traffic, lighting at the intersection, wildlife, there's some concern about flash flood. So some of those things are going to be addressed through the subdivision process. Traffic, we have received a full traffic impact study, which does include the four plexes at the base of the hill, Trail Creek, this portion of the buildout, and again, has been reviewed by our engineering department. Merrill's here, and I'll probably ask him to speak to that effect to some extent. Lighting at the intersection will need to meet all city requirements. Same with lighting at the site, lighting should be downlit and not providing light pollution. Wildlife, we have received our letter from Fish and Game, and as stated previously, we're adding a condition that they show me to plan, you know, complying with all city code requirements. There may have been some other points of concern in that comment, but I wanted to make sure that that was mentioned. And if the commission has any questions on that comment as well, I'm happy to dive into that as well.
Okay, if there's no further questions for Carl, I'd like to hear from Merrill regarding the engineering study.
I can address the the traffic study real quickly and some of the comments. We did receive a traffic impact study for the, that McCormick Ranch had done, and that report covers the whole area further than even McCormick Ranch's property that they control in that area. It talked about the, some of the intersections and what may need to be happening in the future, and we've taken that under consideration. It talks that there would need to be eventually a light at the North Main Extension and Craft Road. It talks about that, and there's still quite a lot of development that can happen. Before that, we have taken that under consideration, and we're looking at doing some paperwork and so forth and seeing if we can get that on our federal aid projects that that we have around town also, so that we have that on a list, anticipating the future requirements there. Also, looking at some different options of realigning the bottom part of Gaethje Road and and getting another access onto Craft Road to improve that intersection. That was also stated in the traffic study, and we are proceeding that way too, doing some evaluations and looking. Again, it did not give any real timeframes when that had to happen. It pointed out the, some of the, the issues that and recommendations, and we as a city are looking at that and those recommendations to see what we can do. Is there any other questions or?
Any further questions? I'm seeing your questions. Thank you. Okay, so with that, I would like to entertain a motion. And if you would like to make a motion, please raise your hand so I can call you. Any motions to be made from the commission?
Or further discussion?
Or further discussion? Shin?
I make a motion to recommend approval of the townhouses at Trail Creek Plan Unit Development from Brian Ball of McCormick Ranch, finding the application does meet the standards for approval under chapter 17.02.140 of Pocatello Municipal Code with the conditions of approval that is listed and detailed and has been raised during this meeting. And authorize the chair to sign the findings of the fact following.
Okay, do I have a second? Is there a second or another motion to be made from the commission?
Is Rich trying to raise his hand?
No, he's abstained. Jack? Your volume is on.
I apologize. I'd like to make a motion to, for denial of the application. Motion to recommend denial of the townhouses at Trail Creek Plan Unit Development from Brian Baldwin, McCormick Ranch LLC, finding the application does not meet the standard for approval under chapter 17.02.140 of Pocatello Municipal Code, finding that it doesn't seem that everything has been thought about.
Could you be specific in that, as far as what items it does not meet? For the findings by that?
For the findings of that. Well, what is it? The the overhangs and stuff? We do not need to, what is it, approve those? All the exceptions?
So, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but with carrying on a formal meeting with the first motion being made, I do believe we need to act on that permission, and then a vote can be called to make the determinations to whether for or against. I don't believe we can make a motion on top of a motion in a
Or the motion could fail for lack of a second.
The what?
There was no second.
So there is no second, so we can accept.
Actually, going to second Shin's motion.
Samantha, I apologize. Can you repeat that?
Sorry, I'm going to second. Can you hear me? I'm going to second Shin's motion. Shin, right? Is that correct? Motion?
I just go by cue, so.
Okay, got it. I'm going to second that.
Do we need to have, because Jackie had jumped in before you clarified that a second wasn't, then a new motion could be addressed. I would have Shin go back. Or I would first say that there wasn't a second on Jack's motion, and says there wasn't a second at the time Shin did it, or cue. We start over with a new motion and then have that one seconded.
Okay, so for clarification purposes, with two motions being made, and neither of them having an immediate second, we will go back to we'll kind of go back to restate, and I will ask for a another motion for against and in a second. So show by raise of hand. Shin?
Yeah, that's cue, but you guys want to discuss this? I mean, given that we have split opinions, maybe we should discuss it a little more before actually kind of entertaining a motion, so.
Yeah, and if I may, staff, quickly, I apologize for interjecting. You know, while the staff report does have some optional motions, those are not the only motions. You know, if there, if the commission feels that there are items that still need to be addressed that are pertinent to the plan unit development criteria, a motion may be made to continue the meeting to a date certain, provided that those, you know, those outstanding concerns are addressed. It doesn't, you know, that hasn't happened often in our board main, so I don't believe this commission has seen that, but that is also an option. So, you know.
Yes, Jack?
I'd just like to say that, what is it? I'd like to see some more neighborly communication between the applicant and the neighbors. So that, what is it? He's not just building up their planning on a few more subdivisions, I'm inferring, and that there is more of a sure road for everything that he wants to get done.
I would second that. I think I just had a concern with the background communication in regards to the lady that spoke earlier regarding her property. Because what, it's been two years since they just had a discussion, so I think that was something that was concerning to me.
Can, am I allowed to interject? If not, I won't. I'm just asking because I think I could add some clarity to that question to Mr. Moore and also council member Stoddard.
So as a reminder to the commission, we look at the application and whether or not it's meeting the requirements set forth by staff. I'm happy to entertain more discussion, but we do need to keep in mind the purpose of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So, yeah, so I guess, given that we're still in discussion, the reason, I guess, maybe I can explain why, kind of my reasoning of why I'm supporting the motion is, first of all, the, all the public comments also indicated that they're interested in this project happening because the project needs to happen in order for any secondary roads to actually materialize in the near future. So in recognition of that, and we heard from the applicant, there seems to be, yes, there seems to be concerns, but it is also in the applicant's best interest to also connect these roads in the long run, because that is also going to make their property or the property that they're developing a lot more attractive. And so therefore, I do see there are structural incentives in place for eventual goodwill to play out. Now, like, like the chair has mentioned, you know, a lot of this is, to a certain degree, there seems to be some tort litigation going on, and that's our grievances between two parties, but in terms of kind of approval of our role of approving the projects and whether it has met the requirements. Now, there is questions of, I guess there was some breakdown in communication, but my position, I guess, the reason I motioned it is that there is enough incentives at play for the applicant and developer to ensure that those relations are mended over the long run. So that's kind of my explanation of my, why I push forward with the motion.
Is there any further discussion? With no further discussion being seen, I would like to entertain a motion. Please cue.
Jill, do you want to go first, or?
Am I correct? Am I correct that there is a motion? Are we still in? Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, cue.
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion to recommend approval of the townhouses at Trail Creek Plan Unit Development from the Brian Ball of McCormick Ranch LLC, finding the application does meet the standards for approval under chapter 17.02.140 of Pocatello Municipal Code with the conditions of approval that is listed by the staff and highlighted by the staff and also reiterated by the applicant. And authorize the chair to sign the findings of the facts once the conditions all has been satisfied.
My second motion.
Thank you. Aislinn, will you call for the vote, please?
Give me one second. Rue?
Yes.
Stoddard? Yes. Kirkham?
Yes.
Moore?
No.
Phillips? Astain?
Astain.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
As, so the motion carried, with it being eight o'clock, as stated before we opened up the public hearing for public comment, the commission is going to take a 10-minute break before coming back and addressing Agenda Item Five. So, commission, if you will set a timer to come back in 10 minutes, and we will reconvene then. Thank you. Okay, commission members, I'd like to welcome you back from our 10-minute break. We could have Jill turn your camera on so we know that you are attending. Commissioner Kirkham, are you in attendance? Can I continue?
You have a quorum.
So while we while we still have a quorum, we will continue on with the meeting, and I will ask to hear from staff regarding Agenda Item Five.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening again. Carl Anderson, again, Planning Development Services Department, again, for the record. My voice may get a little shaky here. I'm pretty cold. I've got a vent that's keeping me nice and chilled. My voice may get a little shaky here, I'm pretty cold. I've got a vent that's keeping me nice and chilled right above me, so bear with me a little bit. You have before you a series of proposed amendments to Title 17 zoning regulations. So on November 14th, 2020, staff brought the proposed changes to city council for a work session and received direction to proceed with these changes. After the initial city council work session, staff identified 18 local developers, engineers, architects to review proposed changes and provide comment. Two ring comments were received in regards to points of clarification. Neither really stated whether they're for or against, just were, had questions on how these would be interpreted. So Title 17 was, these amendments were reviewed by the city's legal department, and no substantial concerns were raised. It should be noted that all notice requirements have been met, and no written or verbal comments have been received. So I'm going to just go through section by section and just kind of hit the high level. But the actual red line showing the sections that are being proposed to be deleted or removed are shown with a red, red lettering and a strike-through. Blue lettering with an underline indicates that it is being, the new language is being proposed, so. Quickly, so under section 17.01.150, under definitions, we are proposing to add definitions for a lot line front, rear, and side in order to improve the consistency of the administration of setbacks. This will improve consistency amongst multiple staff review, multiple building permits and what have you, to make sure that we're interpreting what is a front setback, rear setback, side setback consistently. This will reduce conflicts and interpretations as issues arise. Additionally, correct the citation under definition of a join or adjoining, as well as include waterways and canals at the end of the purpose of nursing requirements for notice requirements. Add a definite definition of short-term rental. We currently don't have a definition of short-term rental, we're saying short-term rental, we do mean Airbnb and the like, so as our department gets calls asking, you know, do you allow Airbnbs, we typically defer to state code, but we were trying to add an actual definition for what that means. It should be noted that it was discussed at the council work session, and we are still working on it as to whether or not this will open up a potential loophole in the code for boarding houses or rentals on a short-term basis. That is certainly not the intent here, and we are still working through some of that, still researching on some of that. But it is not our belief that this would open that up at this time, but I just want the commission to be aware that we are working on that issue that was brought up. Clarify the definition of streets that we're, you know, as stated, to further define street. I'm basically saying that this definition shall not be included to include an alleyway. So that's important in our original townsite overlay area, where we've had individuals request that the alleyway be identified as a street, which would impact how the front door orientation and front setback is interpreted. Additionally, so under section 17.02, land use decisions, comprehensive plan amendments. We're proposing to modify the frequency of an amendment to the comprehensive plan land use map. As it's currently written, an amendment may only occur every six months within the city. As proposed, this would be clarified that an amendment may only occur once every six months on a given parcel or lot. This will allow for amendments on unrelated parcels of land and will potentially reduce the timeframe for potential annexations or other land use-related applications. Seven, under section 17.02.140, corrected code citation. We're references back to another section of code, correcting the section, going to reference it back to. I'll take this time to just pause really quick for going through everything. Does the commission have any questions on any of these items so far? Okay, I'll keep going, see none, hear none. Under 17.03, zoning districts. We're proposing to amend note seven, clarifying the commercial zones with a residential use plus maintain commercial storefronts adjacent to pothrees. And allow for the residential uses to be provided. Right now, basically in commercial genomics, all residential uses must be at the upper level. We're saying that you can provide that residential use on the ground floor as well, provided that you maintain a commercial storefront. So if you're on a corner lot, both frontages facing the street must be commercial. However, that, that portion of that may be your residential portion, which provides some flexibility, helps meet ADA requirements, things like that. Additionally, we're proposing to add short-term rental to the use table and the associated note 30. Paying your attention to that section really quick, so basically, what this note says, that short-term rentals are allowed in all residential zones. Where your residential uses are also allowed, but no short-term, oh, let me back, I apologize. Allowed in all zones where residential uses are allowed. So no short-term rental shall be located within accessory structure where the accessory structure has not been specifically designed for human habitation. No short-term rental shall be located within a recreational vehicle except when located in an approved RV park. Any short-term rental property shall not be occupied by more than one guest party at a time. That's not one person, that is, you know, a family renting an Airbnb for a weekend, that's the guest party. And, you know, it should be noted that state code title 67.65.39 does state that neither county nor city may enact or enforce any ordinance that has the express or practical effect of prohibiting short-term rentals or vacation rentals in the city or county. It does go on to say, a city may implement such reasonable regulations as it deems necessary to public health, safety, general welfare. And so, but part of this is in response to our state code and trying to have a code that does address that it does still need to meet our density requirements. They do still need to meet parking requirements, things like that.
Do we have a question for Carl?
Carl, I'd like to ask a question if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
Just a moment ago, you listed three requirements that they have. The third one, the first one and the third one, I have questions on. One of them had to do with temporary structures. I believe the first one that you mentioned had to do with temporary structures. Could you reread that for me?
Absolutely, and for your reference, I'm on page five of this section of the staff report. And so at the top, you'll see note seven and then thirty. So what this is, is no short-term rental shall be located within accessory structure where the accessory structure has not been specifically designed for human habitation. So accessory dwelling unit while in accessory structure was designed for human habitation. Now, my garage in the backyard, if it, you know, not designed for human habitation, wouldn't be permitted to be a short-term rental.
Absolutely, yep. That clarifies that for me, thank you. Could you read the third requirement that you read in that, that I believe had to do with the number of occupants or the number of parties involved in renting a short-term rental?
Yes, sir. A short-term rental property shall not be occupied by more than one guest party at a time. So, for example, if you have a single-family home, you're not, and let's say you have a lot that only permits a single-family home and doesn't have the density for a duplex, you're not putting a guest party in the basement and a guest party upstairs. What this is saying, you may only have one guest party at one time at that specific unit. If you had a dwelling that was a duplex, you could have a guest party in one portion of the duplex and a portion in the other. But that's assuming that you're meeting your performance standards, so lot size, parking, things of that nature, that would be.
Absolutely.
Were inhabited.
Thank you, I appreciate that. That clarifies that for me.
Thank you very much. Any further questions on that section?
Oh, looks like Jill.
Jill, yes.
Let me say back to you what I think you're trying to say on this section as far as commercial zone. So if there is a home in a commercial zone that is being used for residential reasons, it is no longer permitted?
I apologize, Commissioner Kirkham, could you repeat the question?
Sure. For amend note number seven, which three, 17.03 zoning districts. Am I correct in understanding that if there is a residential home that's being used for residential purposes and has for decades, probably never been used for commercial reasons, does that mean that, that the, that has to be abandoned?
You're referencing note seven, correct?
Let's see, correct.
Okay, no, that is not what that's saying.
Will you explain it to me so I can, please help me understand.
Sure, so I'll reread it really quick and then just dive into that. So residential uses are permitted outright in upper stories, provided that buildings maintain ground floor commercial storefronts to all adjacent public streets. For industrial line industrial districts, residential uses are further restricted to the designated warehouse district. So this isn't changing if something, if a property was built as a single-family home, has been since 1930, continues to be a single-family home, but is now a zone, commercial general, that we would consider a legal non-conforming use, which is governed by city code 17.01, I want to say 170. So they are giving grandfather rights, and they're allowed to continue the use of that property. Now, what this is saying is if you have an office space that was built in 1930, and now they want to add a residential use there, they must do that at the upper level, or the portion of the property that is not on the storefront. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you so much for the clarification.
Absolutely. All right, so section 17.04 overlay areas. This is our original townsite area, street orientation. The front door of the structure shall face the public street on which the building is addressed. For commercial developments, when located adjacent to multiple public streets, the front door shall orient towards the nearest adjacent public street. So that, the purpose of the original townsite is to provide for pedestrian connectivity and is pedestrian-oriented development. What this is saying is if you have a commercial development that has multiple storefrontages, you're not parking, you're not putting the door, the front door and then a parking lot between you and the street. This will reorient that so the development is oriented towards the pedestrian traffic, so it would orient towards the nearest. You can still have your parking, but your frontage of the front facade must orient towards the pedestrian traffic, again, which is part of the intent of our original townsite. Any questions on that? We could also come back to it. Okay, 17.05 development standards, so 17.05.320, we're proposing to delete the neighborhood commercial. This is a cleanup. We did text amendment last year, so you may recall, where we removed the neighborhood commercial zoning district. The reason being that there are no areas in town that have that zoning designation. This was a space that frankly got missed, and we're just cleaning that up. 17.05.571, parking standards by land use. We're proposing to remove the requirement that one, on-street parking space be provided for single-family, two-family homes where two off-street are required. Additionally, on-street parking is considered public parking and does not count towards the minimum required parking in any other case. Your, your street frontage parking, basically this is saying, you, two parking spaces per single-family home, two for multifamily dwelling, and you're not required, that on-street parking does not go towards your minimum parking calculation. It is public parking, part of the reason being. 17.06.610 B4, add requirements for, that for single-family and two-family development, the front door shall face the street upon which it's addressed. This is something in our original townsite, we have a requirement that the front door shall face the street upon which it's addressed, however, we only have that in the original townsite. So what this means is that you could have a development potentially where the front door orients the alleyway and the rear of it orients towards the primary street. This would prevent that and provide that the front door is at, you know, located off the street upon which it's addressed, life safety and also the pedestrian interface there. Finally, 17.06.100 accessory dwelling units, proposing to remove language through the conditional use permit process. Previously, prior to last year's code update, all accessory dwellings require a conditional use permit in addition to meeting the requirements for conditional use permit. We removed that requirement, and that was referenced in two other places in code which were removed. They still need to meet, all accessory dwelling units, still need all requirements for accessory dwelling unit. This does not change that, however, just not the conditional use permit process. This again, as a cleanup, this was removed last year, this was one additional space that was located that was missed. So a full detailed analysis is contained within the staff report, including the proposed amendments. Staff finds proposed text amendment meets the standard of city code 17.02.180 and are in the community's best interest, consistent with the existing provisions of the zoning ordinance and the 2015 comprehensive plan. Staff recommends that the commission take action to consider the proposed amendments and take action to recommend approval, deny, or approve with modifications of the proposed changes to city council. This concludes my, this concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have. Thank you for coming with me.
There any questions for staff at this time? Okay, I have no questions. I would like to open this up for public hearing. And hear testimony by those supporting the application.
I'm gonna go check.
Okay, with seeing no testimony for those supporting, those uncommitted, and those opposed. Okay, with no testimony coming forward, we'll close the public hearing comment section and ask the commission how they would like to proceed, whether that is with continued discussion or I may entertain a motion. We have a hand raised by Jack. Jack, if you could state whether this is discussion or a motion?
It's a motion. I would like to make a motion to make the changes according to the agenda. In.
I would second that.
Okay, so it looks like I have a motion by Jack to approve the staff edits to agenda item five. And then a second by Q. Aisling, could you call the vote, please?
Moore?
Yes.
Brew?
Yes.
Kirkham?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Stoddard?
Yes.
White?
Yes. With no other business, the meeting is closed. Aisling?
Juries?
Or, sorry. Before I close the meeting, it is important to let you all know that the motion carries. And with no other business, the meeting is now closed. Aisling will note the computer clock time, and I thank you, commission members, for staying on as late as you have to serve the city of Pocatello.